Well, yeah, that was a wonderful visit, wonderful tour of the facility. Appreciate our tour guides and I know the tour that was posted on the website, what is it, yesterday, I watched it this morning and I encourage anybody who hasn't already seen it to go look at that and watch that video.
Absolutely.
It is absolutely fabulous what's going on right now and the work's been done. And kudos to BCI and SiteLogic and all of our admin teams, everybody that's doing a lot of good work with that space right now. So I guess Matt, we can continue with your report.
All right, so second item as far as my report is concerned, we have to welcome Miranda.
Welcome.
Miranda started with us on January 4th and she will be in the district office and she will probably be the one that most board members will interact with and communicate with and stuff.
So welcome, Miranda. Good to have you. The other thing I just wanted to touch base about is vaccine program has started.
Last week was the first week with the pilot program for K-12 educators and so we did participate in that and happy to report that we did use all of our potential doses.
This week they made a few changes.
And so we're hopeful that we will continue to get those information, that informational material out to people for those that want the vaccine, that they can continue to access it and stuff. I'm really hopeful that in the very near future, Stearns County Public Health is actually going to be doing mass K-12 onsite vaccination programs. And so that is something that I'm hoping is going to happen in the month of February. We'll see where that goes. And then the other thing I just want to make sure I have also already volunteered Painesville Schools as a site for a community vaccination program. So at some point they will get through their prioritization of.
I think Stearns County is still on 1A, they're almost to 1B priority and then there's 1C.
And then 2 is the general public and I've already made it known that if they need a location in the western part of the county that we will open up space wherever we need to so that we could potentially have a clinic here in our community. And we'll see where.
If that can happen in the future.
But that keeps moving and each week, each day, we're getting new information on it. So I'm just hoping that we can get that information to people out that want to take advantage of it.
That's the big thing. The last item that I have is obviously we're sitting here at the end of January and January and February kind of kick off school budgeting and planning for next year. We're going to talk a little bit about it at the agenda later, but just know that that work has started and over the course of the next several months, you should expect as board members to be starting to interact with plans for the next school year.
Do you pass a question? Do you feel hopeful after some of the things that are coming out from the governor's office that will have some more help based, it seems like, there's potential?
Yeah, I mean, I think when you, when you talk about the governor's press conference yesterday and then the budget and plan.
Absolutely, those are two items that are going to certainly help K-12. I am not sure what the political climate is for it and where that sits, but obviously it's, it's good to be hearing the governor's office speaking from that position.
I think there's also some federal initiatives that are moving that I think are also things that could be beneficial.
The one biggest part that I'm starting to hear pick up some steam is there's more and more conversations about taking and giving schools the flexibility for some funding shortfalls to be able to look and use fiscal year 20 enrollment numbers versus fiscal year 21.
I'm thinking, I'm hearing the conversation pick up a little more, so I think that idea is picking up steam. And it is truly a statewide, it's a national issue, it's not just a Painesville issue. I think that would be the single biggest driver.
That if we could, could have that come through, that would significantly address a lot of our needs.
That actually makes a ton of sense. It's very logical.
So that's what I have for communication items. Any questions for me?
I'll piggyback off the questions and I shouldn't have shortened this earlier. Any other comments too regarding the space?
As far as comments on.
Comments, how they felt and what they think.
I'm going to go with you because what I saw on the bulldog block today was just what we saw. I thought that was a presentation was fantastic. And I think that we just have to have people that would like to be updated on that to get us their email. So I think almost any of the administration would take an email and get it to the right people so people start getting it. That's going to be our biggest issue will be distribution of that data to people that maybe are not associated with the school directly with kids. I thought it was fantastic anyway.
All right, want to be any organizational reports?
Any committee or organizational reports?
What's Central Ed we met?
You did, yes. That board meeting was a week and a half ago, about?
Yeah, the 11th.
Yep.
And they presented on the social workers that are within our districts. And one thing that struck me is that we only have one social worker in our district and I think, is it Albany, I forget which one, has like five. And so there's just more conversation about how do we make sure there's kind of equity for our schools? What are the resources? So I think that's going to be ongoing conversation. Otherwise it was kind of just business as, as normal. We talked about moving the paper. That's about just excitingness. As I got, but it was mostly kind of just updates, right? There wasn't anything significant, I'm looking through my notes.
Made some bills, that was about the extent of it.
Facility committee we met. Yeah, I looked over the stuff with Neil.
Yeah, can I piggyback just a little bit on that, Thomas? So that facility committee did meet again with Neil?
I think we have things put together so Neil can go ahead and get the track replacement design and everything ready to go so that can go out for bids. I think there's still a lot of questions as far as.
Exactly what is the, the priority and how we're going to address the overall complex in its entirety.
The committee did take a look at kind of a tentative timeline and I think what I would like to do is have that be the focus of February's work session is really talking about that and then where you can also start diving into the 21, 22 budget. But I think those two items, they kind of pair nicely, they go hand in hand. But I think then we'll have a kind of a direction and a place to start and tentative timeline that I think that committee could possibly get behind as far as suggesting the board follow that.
The only other thing I had, just Zoom meeting with BB, you know, continuing shared services. I think there's a lot of good conversation, a lot of good ideas thrown around at that meeting. Not only with the shared services we currently have and extending that, but then exploring other avenues and opportunities that we might be able to share within the two districts for, for shared roles to help reduce costs but then, you know, utilize services that both districts require. Some of that knowledge is going back and forth is a good thing. I think that's one of the key things we got out of that meeting and I think everybody's feel positive on that and the things.
I've always felt that if you look around us, we are the only ones that are standing here independent along with those guys. So they merged a long time ago, Belgrade and Bruton, but they're our best asset to try and get to where we might need to go with an entire population in a school. In Valley or look at Cold Spring, Richland, Recorrie, even go all the way around us. They're our best avenue. A working relationship with them I think is only helpful.
No student representative tonight, so we'll pass that. Old business, we have nothing.
None.
New business.
So the first item is policy, continued work from the December meeting.
At December meeting, the first reading for policy 806, 806.1, which is actually the crisis management plan and 807 were presented at first reading. It'd be my recommendation to approve those three policies as they were presented at first reading.
I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve policies 806, 806.1 and 807 as presented.
I'll second that.
Bruce, the motion, second from Rick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls say no? Carry. Rescind policy 825?
So this stems from the policy committee conversation in December as well. It was brought up at the December business meeting. Policy 825 is naming of facilities. This is not a required policy in any way.
At some point, the school district decided to put it in place. The policy committee's recommendation would be to rescind that. I don't think rescinding it necessarily means the board is taking a position on naming any facility. I think what it really does is just positions the board to be able to evaluate and take a look at.
A potential for naming a facility.
On a case by case basis. And I don't know if the policy committee members have anything else they want to add as part of that conversation, but.
I think it's just, it shouldn't be there. It contradicts itself anyway. Says you can't, none of this has to be approved, so it's crazy. So why it's in there, but I think, yes, I would.
I was in on it when we put it in there. And the reason it was there is so you have somebody that has contact with every single student in the school, somebody that has contact with their classroom and they both have untimely mishaps. And who do you name it by? Okay, do you name after the one that's in the classroom that has dedicated themselves to the school or the one that happens to have contact with lots of students because that's their part? You see how it gets, it gets complicated. But I think it was, we had a series of untimely departures from, from life for some people and we were struggling with it and so that's where it came from. As long as we're well aware when it comes up again, we just need to be careful to make it fair. We could have somebody that had dedicated their, their whole career on teaching in a classroom but might not be big and bold out in, in the public. Does that mean that those two departures are different? They're same thing, both of them lost their lives and maybe in an untimely fashion. So that's how it came up. But I think we can resolve it when it comes up.
I think that's the, I think the whole notion of us, you know, Donald rescinding it is just that fact that we can have that, those discussions in those moments and, and carry out the, you know, appropriate decision-making process then.
Especially if it's a donation, if somebody wanted to name something, it gives us the ability to do that. Like the policy didn't uphold any of that anyway because it said, we won't name it unless we go, like the school board approves it. So any donation has to be approved by the school board anyway, so it's going to come through here and not respect anyway, so.
The decision comes from emotion. Emotion doesn't always, isn't always fair and balanced. That's what it was all about. So emotionally, all seven board members are attached to one individual but not another individual and they're both timely. How do you pick? That was the difficulty that we struggled with. So.
I'm looking for a motion to rescind policy 825.
Make that a motion.
Rick?
I'll second it.
And Bruce seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Polls say no? Carry. C, budget reduction resolution action.
So this is an annual resolution that the board sees typically in January. This kicks off the budget process. Basically what this resolution is doing is essentially informing people that the school board is directing the administration to go and start the budget process and identify potential areas that might need adjustment and potential reductions.
This does not in any way say that there are X dollar amounts of reductions or anything, but this is just the first step in the process. Given where our enrollment is and the number of students that we are down from, from last year, we are going to experience some significant budget reductions. That is, is not a secret. This board has talked about that and those discussions haven't changed. There has been nothing that has really moved that needle.
As Maggie referenced earlier, obviously there are some conversations going on outside of here that potentially could drive or impact what those budget reductions look like. The unfortunate piece with that is statutorily, we have an obligation to approve a budget on June 30th.
I cannot in good faith bring a budget to you that is completely unbalanced with the hope that something comes along through a legislative process that will balance the budget.
So we are going to continue our budget work. We're going to work through that, but just know that budget reductions will be coming. And as I said earlier, the board's going to be engaged in those conversations each step of the way and we will end up with a balanced budget come on June 30th for the, well, the business meeting. And June for to approve.
Questions at all on the resolution?
So are you looking for a motion to introduce the resolution?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Bruce. Introduce the final resolution, move it towards adoption.
Adoption, correct.
I'll move it to adoption. Whereas the programs and the financial status of the school district may dictate that the school board consider adjustments being resolved by the school board of District Number 741 as follows. That the school board hereby directs superintendent of schools and administration to consider the review of budgets and programs in the school district for the 2020, 2021 school year and make appropriate recommendations for adjustments. The motion for adoption of the 4.1 resolution was duly seconded by a member. I'll second that motion. By Thomas and upon a vote being taken there.
And it is a resolution, so we do need to do a roll call vote.
For that, we'll go to Miranda.
Ashley Anderson.
Is this 2021?
Yep, so we are, we are reviewing the budgets and programs of 2021 as we develop a budget for 21, 22.
Got it, okay. Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Whereupon the resolution is declared passed. B, lane change request action.
So we have one lane change request, Marie Grothie. She's met all the requirements of a lane change.
We need the board to act on this.
This is also a contractual issue, so I would highly recommend that the board approve it.
We propose to approve lane change for Miss Marie Grothie.
I'll make a motion to approve.
May I use the motion?
Second.
Rick with a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Polls say no? Carry. 2020 school board committee needs action.
The committees that were from the organizational meeting, this is based on Matt's notes. So I was hoping that everybody just took a brief minute and just double checked the actual, whether it's a committee assignment or if it's an organization that you were assigned to. If it all looks accurate, since you're looking at a final document, I would like the board to approve it. I believe it is accurate as best as I was able to keep up with notes.
I was saying, and I went through those pretty quick too, so.
I thought it did too, but I just want to make sure we get it in more eyes. Okay.
So do you want a motion to?
Please.
Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the committee report assignments for 2021.
We have motion from Bruce.
I'll second.
And a second from Maggie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no? Carry. Use plan information.
Okay, so in your packet or in your folder tonight, there should have been a strategic plan. I did also email it out to all board members earlier in the day. It's the same item. What I would like to have happen here is the next step with this process is this actually document is going to be forwarded out to all staff. It's also going to go out to parents, it's going to go out to any community members that were part of the community meetings. What I need from board members at this time is you guys are really going to just be working with this document in February. So what I need you to do is I just need you to go through it, mark it up, create your list of questions and if you could send those to me, that's really what I'm just looking for all board members to do. At the end of the day in February is when the board is going to go and fine tune all of this, make any final changes and solidify exactly what those goals look like. So I don't really need anything from people tonight. This is just information. It's just, you've all got a paper copy. Mark it up, you can take a picture of what you mark up and text it to me if that's easier for you. If you scan it, drop it off, I don't care how you get it to me, but just go through it and I'd like just your feedback on it. Your feedback is going to go into the master list of feedback we get from employees, from community members, all of them. And that's what we're going to bring to the February meeting for us to finalize and make a final strategic plan. Question on that?
So I got some questions.
Yep.
So one is when I'm looking at it, I looked it over pretty well, this is a moving document.
Yep.
So we could be in, in May and we change it a little bit. And we could be in September, so it's a fluid document. The second part of it is, it's always been an issue for me, when we did superintendent reviews, taking those generic sheets, I have always felt was on the edge of ridiculous. There are so many questions that I always felt didn't really apply. There were parts that were relevant, lots of parts that don't. When I looked at this, and I'm just interested in opinion, but it looked to me that we could maybe have this do both. And at the last conference, I brought it up with a bunch of the roundtables and I said, how do we make the strategic plan match the superintendent? So we get to next December instead of a bunch of stuff that may not be 100% relevant to us, it comes out this document and my impression is we're getting close. I just curious what everybody else thinks. So it does two things, or is that the wrong way to do it? I just think it's simpler and current with us. If we have it tied to the superintendent's review, it makes this actually stay current. I've been in on two of these and you might even have the second one on your shelf somewhere along with the second one we did that ended up on the shelf and we can't, we can't go on the shelf or we're just getting our wheels and wasting our time.
Yeah, and to go a little further with that, Bruce, I think you're spot on. I mean, I, I would, I would absolutely recommend that that's the direction the board go is that this strategic plan really are turned into the annual goals for the superintendent. I can tell you right now that this strategic plan, it's going to guide all of our educators in developing their professional growth goals. This strategic plan is going to guide our professional development committee to determine what, what professional development opportunities we're giving in. Everything needs to point back to this plan. So yes, I, I would wholeheartedly agree. I think we can absolutely come up with an evaluation process where rather than just using the MSB boilerplate evaluation, you could actually just, each of you could get out the strategic plan and we could develop a superintendent evaluation based right off of that strategic plan. And that's the only way that it's not going to collect dust is if you don't embed it into your daily practice and how you make decisions, as good as something can be or as bad as something can be, whichever way you look at it, it's going to end up on a shelf collecting dust that somebody's going to forget about. If you keep it front center and it's, I'll go back to this is how we make decisions, then absolute, you can do that.
Do you think it's on the right track? I just want, I'm just kind of curious, so what, if you have any thoughts? If we don't have thoughts today, we can talk about it again, obviously. But I just want to see it actually work. Here's the one call I got. I got a call from Matt Bullard, our superintendent, one day and he says, what does this strategic plan really mean? Good question, because it had been sitting on the shelf for three, three years and it was another anchored hold the shelf down maybe or whatever it was there for. It doesn't do any good if it's not active and I, and I like this. I know when I went to the school board association or school board at the conference, lots of schools weren't really interested in the combination, but lots of schools could hear what I was saying. They said, we got to have it active, but if everyone wants to give us some thought, but I think that's our biggest thing. December comes along, next year, we're doing the superintendent's review. We get into how the Painesville schools are doing right here and I don't have a question that asks me how many organizations local he's involved in and does he get involved with the politicians, you know, something, I don't know any of that stuff. And I, I don't expect I ever would. This is what I'm interested in. So.
Agreed. So please send those questions, send that feedback. That is, is the critical next step here. And then in February, we are going to get this finalized and, and ready to go.
So then a question, so February, we're in the work session where we kind of see all the feedback and is that when we'll discuss like the bishop, you know, some of the overall things and then, okay.
Yep.
Yes.
And we can wordsmith and we can, yes, we can have some discussion about is that really what we want this to mean? And absolutely.
Yep.
Anything else on this?
Well, I sent you a little bit on what I thought on the college thing. I think we're just playing on words here. I don't know that where it says college, because that came up last time as a group, that we were looking for a progression issue. They were like independent things, career ready, college ready and ready for the community involves all of it. I didn't ever get the impression, but I know that some of the board members felt that it was more like we were really pushing for college. Well, we're going to have people in two-year and four-year colleges, we're going to have people go to career. I don't know how you actually write it to make it into.
Yeah, I mean, I think the other thing when, you know, and we can get into this, but I, I think you could, even if you're talking about post-secondary versus college, I, I think that's a, it's a more encompassing term as well. So yeah, but those are, those are specifically the types of feedback that, that I'm looking for. And, and then obviously we will get feedback from staff as well and. And I would think there would be some parents and community members that would give us some feedback as well.
And then we can take that in total and in February, we can work on coming up with a polished product that, that we can say this is for the next three years. This is how we're going to make decisions and this is the direction we are, we are going to try to move.
Is it more helpful to you if we all did work off of one document than like edit it with our comments? So you could kind of see, would that be easier or more helpful? Or would you rather have all of us send independent?
I would rather just have you send them independently and then I'm going to just create a spreadsheet with the feedback.
And then I'm going to lump feedback by areas and stuff. That would be, be easier.
Isn't this just my personal preference?
Those, the comments, when you start getting a lot of them.
It gets very hard for me to track in a document. Whereas if I can structure a spreadsheet and organize it so that it's by, by cluster, by goal, it will be easier, I think, for, for us to work through it.
Upcoming or meeting schedule. Meet confer on this Thursday. February 9th work and learn session, February 23rd regular business meeting.
Yep, so 28th at 3:30 is meeting confer.
Ashley, I have you down for that and Maggie, if, if, I just need one of you there. You're both welcome, but just know I, I need one or two of you there. And then work and learn February 9th and then the regular business meeting.
Yeah, 5:00 PM on that, the 23rd regular business meeting.
Yeah, so the 23rd of February, that's a pri, is it a township primary day or something? I think February is their primary and then March is maybe an election day or something for township. So just know it. And we have to adjourn that night by 6 o'clock. That shouldn't be an issue. I was going to say that the work. I was gonna say that the work session might be a little bit longer.
But the the business meeting shouldn't be an issue being done by 6:00.
Would it be possible for the board meetings to invite us all to one? So we could accept them out of calendars?
Absolutely.
Versus us having to.
Can you just make a note of?
That would be great, even us meeting ones if they're on there.
Yes.
That way, if it changes, then it's changing our calendar and we don't.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Would the board do now adjourn?
State with the motion. I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Carry.